All right, it being seven o'clock, let's come to order, please. As is customary, we'll, when we have presenter here, we will postpone minutes until after our work of us. So, Mr. Tark, you have three chapters for us, very exciting, the last three chapters.
Woo-hoo.
So, I would say that that's not a very common occurrence to delay all the early stuff for the speakers. So thank you. So that's remaining minutes one by one.
That's new, isn't it?
Yes. Bad news is that there is one other chapter. It's the demographics chapter that we've gone over before, that we're updating it to the last American Community Survey. It's just the data, there is a chapter, Canterbury today, it's a chapter. Sorry about that. But it's very exciting to do these three chapters right now, so we could talk about schedule for that. But it's basically, American Community Survey updates every year, and it's just, it's all the data that we put in there, because that was unfortunately the first thing we did.
And that we're close to five years late on this, did we use 2020 or did we use right?
We had 2020, but the American Community Survey is a smaller scale sample, and it's kind of a, it's rotating either three-year average or five-year average depending upon the data. So they just release it into the data. Sorry, what are you?
It's changed.
It's changed somewhat. So, community facilities, we've made some changes since the last time we talked. We got some new language in here from Shaker Village, they're great. We have Rachel sent this over, some new language to the library, just some tweaks and some changes in narrative there. But we also, and I think you might want to start with energy power, and talk about those proposed changes. I've included the recommended language from Energy and Community Power, it's on page 7 dot 13. And I thought we could ask folks who would help us with that language to come up and talk a little bit about that.
Great.
Pretty smooth segue, huh?
You got all the water, right?
Yeah, I know.
We can move that for you. No, 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 that's fine, I like the way it is.
So the two things that we have here is the language on 713 and 714, that's proposed for, within the content of the chapter itself, and then some other information that is being proposed to be included as an appendix to the master plan. Can I ask you to go over your thought patterns, kind of your process?
Yeah, I think I read this yet, so maybe I need...
Why don't we hear your thought process?
Over the last maybe five, six years, the two committees, the Energy Committee and the Community Power Committee, which was later being formed, have written several documents about the future of Canterbury in terms of energy. So it's really pretty easy for me to pull out of those documents a lot of information that we've already developed. And so, my thought in trying to work with all of this information is that, as I said last time I was here, that we really want to look ahead to where the town could be in 10 years in terms of energy. And where we'd like to see it really is to have some very specific goals in mind. It was suggested that maybe we wanted to talk about our successes in the Energy Committee, the Power Committee, because that's not what the plan is about for the future. So, this list of one through nine came from both committees. The Energy Committee added the last seven dot five or six to the list, we heard several of them from the Community Power Group. And I'm pretty ambitious, but you won't find having a plan unless you have something to work toward. So, I'm happy to answer questions about any of that. In terms of this big long document that we included, this is language straight from our electric irrigation plan that we wrote back in the fall of 2022, and it's, you know, there's a lot there. I don't know whether you're, as an attachment to the chapter, if all of this should be done, but it's all good stuff, so that would be up to you, I think.
I appreciate it, the scale of the text that recommended, you know, it was more, we, you know, the master plan isn't the end-all, so we did, you know, put some language in supporting your work. This is much better and more detailed, but it's not their plan. It's just, and you really want to show support in the master plan for these different types of projects. So we could go out and, you know, seek some funding someday to the master plan. So I thought it was actually the right level of goals, it's the right timeframe. I think we can have a conversation about what you want to see in the appendix. And there's a lot here in that recommended document, I don't know if we need to answer those questions today, but I like the scale of and how it fit with all the other different topics that we have in the community facilities chapter.
Great.
So, my feeling on the appendix is, if it's relevant and good information, I mean, we don't want to put any of this as a P D, but if it's relevant and good information, people are only going there if they want to find out, so we're not burdening anybody. And we don't have big printing bills, because it's basically electrified.
Sure. Well, you know, I don't think any of us would be upset if some of it was cut, yes. It's just, this is all the thinking that came out of the two committees pleading up to March of 2023, the irrigation thing. So, you know, I'm fine, we're fine with whatever you want to do with that.
I don't think any of us want to go through that and edit it, you know.
I don't feel it either, that's why.
So, so we can make sure that you have it, if you want to read through it, you can decide whether you want to include it as an appendix on a different day, but I, I thought the scale was spot-on for what you're trying to do, what you have in the community facilities.
May I ask a quick question about that? I see that generation, I haven't been able to do this completely, but do we have battery in, how do you?
Yes, on number three, it says create local energy storage systems to supply backup power to all residences and businesses.
That's a goal.
That's a goal.
Sure is.
Where are we going to be in 10 years, right?
Yeah, 10 years, that's a goal.
So I would aim number two to the transition of electrify the municipal fleet, and I, that's great. I think it should also be a goal to make sure that we are generating enough electricity to support the power that that fleet uses.
I agree.
I'm not sure that's in any of these nine goals. And that concern really comes from the extra Canterbury concern that, you know, the country's running out of over transmission and generation for the electrification that's going on. We've generated our own sufficient.
Well, that's, that's very interesting, because we're kind of working on a project right now that we're hoping to apply for a grant that will give us 100% of the energy needs of all the municipal buildings in town, at least those that now exist, because it can't, people can't predict what's down the road. But I think that's already being undertaken. Now, as far as providing energy to everybody, yeah, I mean, we're going to try to do some things like that. It's a little bit, it's maybe too big a goal for two committees to do, if we are in charge of doing all this. We're working towards that.
So, so it's your document, these are, you know, proposed, this is proposed language. You could always add something, say, to one that says, "And work towards energy, supporting energy needs for EVs." I don't know how the committee would feel about that, but...
We're fine with that.
But that's something that, you know, I love to hear that there's something here in the master plan that could support you looking for some grant funds, and that's, that's, that's one of the reasons why we're, we've got all this information in the master plan to be able to support efforts like that.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly why we wanted to put this in the plan.
Do you have a question? Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything at this state level, is there anything at this state level in terms of what they want to see municipalities doing for energy that we want to align with? Are they asking that communities electrify? Is there any language that we want to put in there to match expectations?
I don't know. You say this is, this is being led at the local levels?
Yeah. If anything, there's been general and firm pushback on some of this stuff from the state. There is a new State Department agenda, but I would say the leading edge of pushing is happening.
And I, I think too, the fact that we have the Community Power Coalition, which is, how many communities now, 50?
Sixty now.
Sixty communities that join together to do a lot of things, not just provide electricity on the wholesale market, but also to generate local income, so that we'll have money to do some of these projects. So I, I think that's beginning to happen, but I wish it were moving a little faster in that direction.
Rich, I know one of the biggest things, especially like, I mean, we started during the eclipse, and all these cars went up north, and there were lines of 43 people in line waiting for a supercharger. Is there any thought, well, two things, I think the three-phase stops at Baptist Road, it doesn't go up.
Doesn't go to the news and complex.
So, that would be a hurdle there. And also, maybe set as a goal, a supercharger or a charging station, either, I'd like to see one here in the center, where we have the three-phase right here, or, at the very least, maybe exit 18. I know there's some down at 17, but there's nothing here at 18, and that could be a little town secret.
There has been a study that was looking at both modern answer that identified the rest area as a potential supercharger, and, you know, it was really kind of, it came out of, well, a couple of, it was different than the study that D O T just did that did not identify that area, because there's, you know, all the Tesla chargers at 17. If there is something in here that talks about that though, that, you know, because there is a lot of, there's a fair amount of federal funding out there, and, you know, you're, it's just, it's just a burgeoning, you know, where are we going to highlight, where are we going to put these chargers? And you're right, there are a lot of folks looking for, looking for chargers.
Yeah, for structuration there. But the other thing is that you mentioned the municipal fleet, I think that's a lofty goal, because you're going to need three-phase, you would need some superchargers in that town building, and, you know, because there's no way that you're going to get a fleet, like a dump truck, a electric dump truck, per se. And, you know, they used it that day, and then the next day, they got to use it again, they can't be, oh, I'll get 30%.
We had a lot of discussions about charging stations and what we will need in the future. There's been a lot of debate about Canterbury, where would we need to put one, and who would actually use it? Were people who, let's say, visiting Canterbury, Shaker Village, would they use it? You can't make Canterbury, Shaker Village put one around unless they do it on their own. So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about that, and it's...
Let me get somebody driving up the highway, because that is pleasant, can't they generate a map?
They can, eventually.
And so they could exit off the highway, drive into Canterbury, and, you know, it's going to take them half hour to supercharge, they can go into Canterbury store for half an hour.
Well, I think that's a great idea, but, but a lot of people feel that best place would be, like, where I'm from, Lexus, like, exit 18, parking garage area, it's just a lot of, you know, I mean, eventually, I'm sure we could run a grant to go charging stations.
You put it at the, at the rest area, and then you get, you get every Canterbury resident gets a key to that special entrance.
There you go.
We could certainly add some language about charging, not specifically knowing the location, because those are...
Encourage the development of...
Yeah, in this long document, we do have a statement that I can't find it, of course, right now. But there's a statement about having highest level charging stations in key locations in town, something to that effect. So that could be lifted and brought into this, if you think.
But my thinking is not only just the key location, like exit 18, but pull these people into town a little bit, so they spend money while they're charging the car.
On the other hand, traffic. Well, we'll certainly consider that on the timeframe.
I think it could be broad right now, and add that as number 10?
That's good for me. Can you back that up? To generation, we were talking about generation, and where are we going to put that language? Something like, "Work toward or encourage generation of the community energy needs as possible."
Under number one, I would add a comma after lighting, and say, "And work towards a generation of enough renewable energy in Canterbury for future EV needs."
Yeah. Well, I think it's more than that, it's all of the electrical needs of homes, well, for Joshua, for example, is 100% offered, that we generate more electricity than we use, but not at the right time, so it's not... So, I'm saying, well, let's just make it more gentle than just EVs.
Yeah, I agree, okay.
You're not going to get any complaints from us if you want to strengthen these scores.
Exactly. We were afraid these were too ambitious, and we were going to have to back down.
That's why we want to start with you.
Well, that's great, because really, yeah, anything you think.
Good question.
Sure.
I'm just like curious, is there a revenue generating option for putting charging stations?
Yes, we've talked about that briefly, did you remember any of those conversations?
No.
So, so it's tricky when you're using federal lighting.
Yeah.
It's even trickier on the interstate. You notice you can't, you know, so, so there's, there's lots of discussion about this, and then who does the charge point, who takes care of the credit card and all that? So there are discussions about that, I think you want to charge for it, but how to get beyond charging, you know, just to break even versus making a profit versus debt to $500,000 for the four direct chargers that it costs these days?
In a perfect world, the state would create lines of chargers that, you know, somebody could find on a map and call it, and maybe collect the money and have it sort of profit share back to towns where it was located. Perfect world, it's probably not going to happen in the United States.
So, so the way it kind of seems to be going is that it's, there's public-private partnerships, it's hard.
I suppose what I'm thinking of is, when we first bought our EV before we had a charger installed, we'd go up to the outlets, and there are companies like Roll Tech that perhaps would pay rent to the town of Canterbury, and then they would handle, and then you're bypassing grant money, that's just, this is...
That's worth looking into.
There are those programs, and I think they need their return on investment, where they, I think they have the outlets, they've got... And there's all kinds of opportunities. Right now, it's hard to even find the infrastructure to have it installed, just coming out of COVID and the newer demand, so I think there was something in, you know, on the news about all the billions of dollars in federal EV money, and there's only been like 12 of them installed, because it's taking so long to just get through the planning pipeline, and then when you order it, it takes a while. A lot of federal money's tied in with, you have to buy American, and it's not available in the U.S. So, you know, all of those, but we're working towards it, and one place to have it is here.
And there's for now, that's...
So, for the 2034 goal, I like that, but, but, you know, when you guys are writing your grant application, it's here.
Sure.
I think there's a much larger revenue, revenue generating action that we should be pushing, which is the battery storage of electricity and selling it back if you demand.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about that a lot.
And that's it, yeah.
Yes, number three, you kind of said, you mentioned selling it back, but that would certainly be part of the plan.
Right, okay.
I did notice today that low-carb climate is not pushing. Yeah, probably, you know, because all the electricity, that's going solar.
Sure, that's, I just read that, that's...
I can make those changes for the, for the next draft, the public, the government.
All right, I guess we're looking to wrap up with Community Power here. There are no more questions and no more input from you folks? Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate you putting it together.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
So we work back from the previous chapter to those, you know, a couple of changes that we made. Again, some language that Rachel from the library put together for us, just to update. There's section 7 dot 8. Really, probably 80% of what we had there, updated it to looking away from a part-time communications person to the volunteer position, so we took some language out of that. Added some of the discussion on page 79, just about the accomplishment, well, let's see, you know, on the, on the right side, according to the 2022 Institute of Museum and Library Services annual report, service hours to residents, so we added that language in there.
I had had a question about the use of the word Chromebooks, is that trademarked, is that? And what if the library decides next year to go to Apple product or something, to say laptops? Is that what we're talking about here?
Those are laptops, yeah. Apple products are probably 10 times as expensive.
I'm not suggesting we do that, I just...
I mean, like, as a statement of what we currently have, I would assume that they said Chromebooks, Chromebooks is what they have.
Yeah, I'm sure.
But 10 years from now, Chromebook may be integral in order. If we want to be really vague, we could say portable computers, but...
Internet access device, I don't know. I'd be happy to call Rachel and ask her if she does, if she has...
And the other change was just the language about Shaker. It's 716, because I didn't put the header back. But just, you know, updated that paragraph, just to describe Shaker Village, excellent commander of staff, Richard. He was really happy we checked in with him, so that's a good recommendation. And Greg was noting that we wanted to check in with the fair, anything else that they could have in here, so we could do that this week, because we want to, we want to have everything posted Friday.
That's a requirement for the public here. Lois, you were going to ask Stephanie?
I have emailed Stephanie in, like, Edmonton this evening.
Yeah, well, this only, I only thought of it today, so...
If they don't, if they don't feel strongly about it, you know, I'll try and chase them, but...
I'm just looking through this, I noticed there's a number of references to your website, but I'm not seeing in these versions this, maybe it's classroom. The website is going to very shortly be moved to canterburynh.gov.
Okay.
And probably that would be done before this is actually going to be final and published. So, to plan is that all these URLs are still working, we'll take you to the new location if I do my job right. But we might want to consider just updating the...
I think that's a great idea.
That would be throughout all the chapters.
Yeah, that would be everywhere, everywhere that canterbury-nh.org is replaced. That's the idea, if we get all the requests correct.
Yeah.
Is the historical society here somewhere?
You know, I don't believe they're all...
It's, it is an amazing resource and a good mission.
Who did we contact to that?
It's not Fox, I don't have any more, I'm blanking on names, a guy. They, they have a piece on the website, you can find that.
Yeah, I'll do that. Thank you. Mike on page 717, conservation, the heading, Conservation Area Future Needs Summary. I read that needs is a verb, I think you intended as a noun, so we might want to rephrase it, just because it's ambiguous. It's like we need some...
Oh, the future needs a summary versus summary of future needs.
Yeah.
That's a valid point. That's such as stupid language.
Yeah, it keeps me in business, though. So, the summary goes between areas and future.
I have a question.
Yes.
Sure, someone, anyone? Is it typical to put in hours of operations for a document that's going to be in existence for 10 years? Or is it sufficient to say hours can be checked on the website? I'm just curious, we just added a day to our transfer station, who knows what that looks like as we grow in 10 years? Does it seem evergreen?
I think I've always kind of leaned towards having as much information there, and, and, you know, understanding that over a number of years, things change.
In 10 years, we might be really happy to have a record of what happened 10 years ago.
How we work on Tuesdays.
Well, that Tuesday was just recently added.
Yeah.
I think we just say as a publication.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not that, I'm just curious, is that the common thing?
Introduction that...
That's pure of that committee, I'd love to see it, but...
Yeah, I'm just like thinking about, you know, looking at this in 10 years to do the next version, and I feel like being able to look back and go like, oh, that's what it was 10 years ago, this is what it is now. I'd actually, you're really strong, interesting.
Yeah, let you know what the dog pound hours were in 2018.
I did hear.
Yeah.
I feel like we need to worry more about cow pound rather than, oh, seriously.
How could we do one of these?
Was that the first one?
No, we go back to...
Oh, I go back to the 80s.
There was, not like this, but there was, your first one was in the 40s, 30s? We were early adopters. I would say that with that new language, or if you take a spin through it, we're going to, we're going to post by Friday at the latest. We'll be, we'll be locking that down Friday morning. I actually want to hear back from the Conservation Commission in me on Thursday, if we've got a lot of, a lot of implementation priorities from the, it's, it's very heavy from the Conservation Commission, so I think they'll like what we have here, but I want to hear from them after their meeting. So we'll be making some edits, we'll add, if we have something about the fair, historic, we'll get that blurb in.
I'm going to the Conservation Commission.
I'll be on that, Logan, they have informed me that they will not be discussing that the wetman's setback at the next meeting. I don't know why, and they didn't tell me that they were going to, when they were scheduling.
So you don't need to worry about it?
So, you don't need to go to that meeting, thank you.
Then I will not go to that meeting.
All right. So, I asked them basically to give me a, to score it just as a... I really think this could be aligned with what we have this week, you know, you, you have very... I really think this could be aligned with what we have, because we, you know, you, you have very high priorities for their work and the things that we have in the natural features chapter, but, and I'm also meeting McKen tomorrow, just to get kind of the take from the admin side.
Uh, recreational facilities, we had a talk, and we mentioned at one point, uh, the need for a building for the, uh, Rec Committee. Uh, and I don't see that in this paragraph. We had more discussion about that, we decided not to, or? I was also thinking that I know the fair is always been, there's always storage issues for the fair, and maybe there could be some. If there were to be something about, uh, finding property, uh, land to put some structure on and some structure to, uh, help to accommodate future recreational and fair storage needs.
I had not felt that that, I, I just, it didn't register with me that we had gone, that we wanted to have that in here.
Yeah, what other people recall about that that was made?
There was a movement afoot, oh, probably a year or two ago. And they were looking for some, the parish house got involved and, um.
This has been going on for years.
Yes, so there's always been an underlying, um, vocal need for a separate, that isn't, separate from the church, for obvious reasons, um, have their own facility.
Separate, separate from administration and scrapp.
Separate from school.
So, so what is it?
We've got so many storage facilities in town that seems like, this could be resolved from.
Is it indoor basketball court too?
Yeah. Yeah, I, there's, there's been a lot of vocal little things, um, basically a center for people to, for kids to go to, to hang out in, to participate in activities, you know, and some of these needs are already being met by the parish house.
And the library and.
And the library and everything, so I think that's why it always gets pushed back, because a lot of these different needs are met in diff, are being met in different places. So I don't know whether that then would be. It can just keep.
So, uh, maybe you should. So we sort of general assess the needs for, uh, for recreational, uh, uh, future needs for recreational facilities?
Did this turn up on any of our surveys?
I remember it jumping up out of that, we didn't ask about it, I think, specifically. So, so we've talked about a community center, and those have been over three years, and having kind of that tool, a recreation component. It's, it's, you know, so we had a master plan, and we had our regional economic development strategy, and they're able to go out and pay the price for some federal funding. Because there was a planning process behind it. But that was a little bigger scale, and it was more a regional center versus a town rec building. I think, I like the idea of assessing the needs, you've got it there, you've got a total.
And, and this part about the storage for the bear could go with the bear.
I can add that.
Right now, the Rec Committee is, you know, a bunch of, you know, specific individuals that have invested interest because their kids are active in those sports.
Right.
And then once those kids age out.
Next to the parents.
Who's stepping up, you know, and, and right now, they do soccer, they're doing a fabulous job with soccer, they do, uh, Halloween candy, um. They some meat.
All that's fine.
Great. So at least we've.
Any other questions?
Rich has got a good point, mentioning that Halloween, that is a big deal, actually.
It's been a big deal, it's been around for many years, and it has changed greatly, when it was in Shaker Village for a long, a long.
A lot of those people that are involved are the same people that are involved in the soccer program and, you know, it's their recreational.
It's Randy Johnson, um.
Randy Johnson, Danielle Crowman.
Yeah.
Name of your.
Is it worth trying to get a couple sentences about that?
I think it would be.
I can reach out to that.
Thank you, Lois. Does that kind of thing also go in the, um, the line name is called the, uh, RIC, the, the.
Capital group.
Yeah. Um, the, the, the hope to spend some money on that, or is that?
So, so I think, you know, the, the CIP is six-year timeframe, it just seems like it's a little beyond that, six years. You know, and at some point, you would get in there. Um, the only thing I would say, perhaps, we wanted to start setting aside five thousand dollars to the capital reserve, and that would go into CIP.
Okay, when we get there.
Jason McKen down the road.
Are we moving on from community facilities?
So the, statutorily, the master plan is the vision chapter and the land use chapter. And the other chapters kind of build, build all the more.
Yep.
Background information, you know, so housing, transportation, um, natural features, they are not statutorily required for approval of the master plan.
Which two are statutory required?
Uh, the vision and the land use chapter.
They're the only ones?
So I say that because implementation chapter actually was added late to the statute. But I think a lot of times, master plan sat, and the implementation chapter is one way to kind of emphasize that it's a living document.
But implementation's not statutorily required?
It's just, it's in the list of, and, and these are really neat, you could do. But the vision chapter, and, and, you know, we waited to the end because we brought everything together, and it was being written through all the different chapters that we were working on. And this kind of summarizes basically, you know, why did, why you did this, what's the vision, what's the, you know, kind of the, some of the things that came out of the survey? And, and, you know, just a summary of the, of the visioning sessions, the, and then basically, you know, those, those kind of overall, you know, just blurbs about each of the chapters. And then how to achieve the vision, it's almost, you know, we're repeating it in more detail on the implementation, but this, you know, implementation is required, this is required part of that document. So I think this is just, this is almost just a summary of, of all the ground you've covered with the different chapters. You know, we did talk about doing a CIP. It's, it's, it's a much higher level, but encourages the mix of uses and densities, um, promote, preserve, categories, agriculture, heritage, so it's a, it's a ten thousand foot level. We get much deeper into the weeds in the chapters, much deeper into the weeds in the implementation chapter. The, um, so I don't, you know, I think we've seen all this before, this is just kind of bringing it all home. We also talked, and, and, and this is almost, you know, from, from just different plans that we've done, there, there is a regional concerns chapter, it really needed some chapter. It's kind of evolved to a, a blue block. This was just some things that we wanted to talk about that, that, you know, and you can have in there or not, it's, it's an option. But, you know, where we are here in Canterbury, in our world, how things sometimes connect. This also starts to talk about some of that mutual aid kind of discussion that we had last time. And, um, you know, very high level, but, but you're able to point to that, at, at, at future conversation when you're starting to think about your lack of, uh, EMTs.
Kind of, if the school system, that's, sure, it's there.
Yeah, so, you know, this is, this, when I first started master plans, you know, and, and, you know, we were doing these regional needs and regional concerns chapters, it was, there was a lot more, we cover a lot more territory, I think this is just your acknowledgement that there's some connections with your, your neighbors, and there's some opportunities in the future, perhaps to save some money by joining together or reacting to a lack of a workforce, maybe there's some things there. There's a total here in that.
This is really the first time we're seeing this, right? So I think people want, it's not very wrong, if people want to take a minute to skim through it.
I think I've told you that we have learned a lot about, um, working between Word and InDesign. Ever in this project? If we stayed in Word here, this would be, and our new staff person Riley is ready to, you know, once we lock it down, to convert everything into the format of the other chapters. Try not to do things four times, maybe twice. I like Word.
That panoramic, uh, bin or bottom worked out really nice.
That was Stephanie from our office had that idea, it's like, okay.
You want me to not break up the text where it is here, because that's a, it's a problem.
She, she was struggling with the, with the line numbers and the layout.
All right. Word does not handle clapping, I guess, I think.
Yeah, just use WordPerfect, you know, words.
No.
Word star two thousand.
It's really good.
Look, let me tell you, glory is in the box.
So, um, the statute requires, uh, I had never read that, this is very interesting. It's not only for the locality, but the region and the whole state, and I see a regional concern is here. Seems like you comply.
Try it.
I have one.
Sure.
As a writer, I don't personally think anything, so I've noticed with the use of the Oxford comma, thank you, um, except for, um, line fifty-one. Outdoor recreation businesses and restaurants, it sounds like that people want outdoor restaurants, if that's the case, otherwise you need a comma after.
Thank you, good cap.
Outdoor recreation restaurant is fine.
I mean, maybe, maybe they said we specifically want outdoor restaurants, but otherwise.
I, I need that to count. But thank you for, we, we, we struggle about just kind of conversations we've had about two spaces or one.
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 And I actually read that without the Oxford comma wrong, but I read it a few minutes ago, yes.
I have a T-shirt that says Oxford comma Preservation Society.
I want one.
Uh, line sixty-seven, regarding housing in Canterbury, there was strong support for workforce and affordable housing that will continue to keep Canterbury accessible for all ages and incomes, including housing for downsizing seniors, wishing to remain in Canterbury as well as homes for young families and those in the workforce. So how does that sound? Yeah, I, I have a problem with the word strong, I, I felt like there was that most moderate. I think there was divided, but strong feels like it's a little overstanding.
Well, I don't know, I, I like the vibe and as we evolved last fall. It's your language.
Here's a suggestion, there was strong support for, uh, housing for downsizing seniors wishing to remain in Canterbury as well as homes for young families and those, and those in the. If, if we move the, uh, so we've got workforce in here twice, right? Uh, so, we had, there's definitely strong support for housing, uh, for downsizing seniors and for, uh, homes for younger families. Uh, but there was also support for more workforce and affordable housing.
I think the problem that we saw when we were doing, you know, sort of community comments on this, is that when you say homes that are accessible for seniors and young families, people are like, yeah, that's great, we love that. When you say affordable housing, they go, what, in my backyard? Like, people don't understand the definition of the term, and so they oppose it when you explain the meaning of the thing, or actually are very in favor of it. I think that led to a lot of confusion in the public sessions on that.
Right, so I think the reason I brought this up, and what Josh was concerned is, is that it, uh, it triggers that response by having the strong support for workforce and affordable. Uh, the first thing is talked about, that maybe there's strong support for, uh, for some, uh, some more housing in town, especially for, uh, downsizing seniors and, uh, homes for young families, and also concerned about workforce and affordable housing. Where, yeah, where do we go?
Is it sufficient to just say that there was support for?
Yeah, just probably the words. Thank you.
We don't want to give the impression that we're not.
Kind of strong?
Just support.
I think it was more than vocal.
Support wants to carefully explain what you actually meant.
No, I think the nuance you're talking about was exactly.
Yeah.
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 I think there was support.
Yeah, when you say affordable housing, people hear like crappy apartments.
Section seven, section nine.
It's not actually what we need in the slightest, but.
That's not what it means in Canterbury for search.
Your building code wouldn't support that anyways.
And the price of land just wouldn't support it.
Also.
So I think we get to that point, um, with a little more nuance on, on line one seventy-three, on the goal of center housing. Encourage the developer additional residential units that are smaller and more affordable to accommodate downsizing seniors and young families.
Yeah.
Great.
I, um, noticed the, on line fifty-three to fifty-nine, um, I know this is not supposed to be in the weeds, but it does mention the variety of places that people put high priority on. Morale Pond, Pimple Pond, Shaker Village, near my river down beach, um, the, the, um, area that's ignored in here or not named is, I, I don't know if it has, has a name to it, the whole section of land between, uh, Baptist Hill Road and Northfield, whatever that's called. Yeah, oh, it's, it's where I'm sterns, it's in that area there, sterns just, it goes, it's in that, it doesn't have a name.
That's Conservation Commission to, uh, ask, ask them how we should identify that.
Yeah, and I.
I feel like when you have this to them, they're not, they're not, they're not that honest.
It's a, but they make that as a condensed place in the vision chapter, specific. It's probably in there, in the, in that chapter, but it seems like a, um, an obvious omission.
Okay.
Yeah, it should be, because it's recent, it was recently purchased, it was a recent purchase by.
Electrical extension. Yeah, it's four hundred acres.
I know, but the whole area is probably, is.
So let's that show.
It doesn't have a name, oh, it's being built, you know, yeah, but when the conservation area.
Like, I think they're calling, specifically the conservation area, I think they're calling it Big Woods.
Right, the Conservation Commission, they circle that area whenever they talk about all the things, whatever they call it as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joshua. Good night. Anything, uh, with limited financial resources available by taxation, respondents preferred local investment in road maintenance, fire protection, recycling, and police protection over other towns' services.
Very looking for.
Line eighty-nine, page two point three.
I've seen that information from our service.
Yes.
Uh, it's more, it was a question about, we're a preferred local investment.
I, I, when I was reading to it, I, I was kind of internally flagged that as well. You just.
The prefer that the town spend. That prefer that the town spends its, its limited resources in these areas, or in, on road maintenance, fire protection, recycling, over other town services. Or personal disagreement with our. Uh, you know what? Shouldn't not schools be in here somewhere? Are you serious?
So, so I think that's, that's kind of that municipal versus schools portion of tax rate that we're talking about. So it's that, it's the much smaller part of the pot, but it's, it's the municipal pot that we're referring to.
I, when I, when I read that, there is strong support for those specific areas in town. Anything under those topics, get overwhelming support in town meeting.
So, so how about with limited municipal financial resources?
Fine, if that works for me, anyone else?
What'd you say? So with limited municipal financial resources and scratch the available by taxation.
Yeah.
You're saying the same thing.
Respondents, uh.
Or residents.
I'm going to get rid of the word local too, maybe that is part of it. Yes, so that, that local confuses the preferred investment and define what the, where it's coming from.
Another question, right, to your comment about schools, the, the twelve, I think it was twelve thousand dollars that the town voted for to give the, um, withdraw committee the resources to do, uh, what they needed to do, did that come from municipal resources? Or that's not from the school budget, correct? So we are investing.
I don't know where.
That was a foreign article. They came double.
It was raised in one or half budget.
Word articles.
So that came from town budget, municipal resources.
As opposed to the school budget.
Yeah.
I don't think we'd be allowed to take that from the school budget.
Right, so my question is like if, there's evidence that, you know, I agree with Craig, that schools are a priority.
But this information is specifically from the survey that we did.
Get, work the word town budget, and you say respondents preferred the town budget prioritize, and list out those things. So, yeah, everyone should know at least those two town budgets.
Does that work for you, Michael?
Yeah.
Elegant approach.
Thank you.
Show mustaches in this room. Mustaches are elegant.
I found draw mustaches on every one, gender, person, diversity.
You're right. All right, let's keep focused.
Mustaches are overrated.
Oh, I don't know, cellular coverage, we were just talking about this today.
Do you?
Does Comcast come to town?
Well, that's.
Broadband just seems to be happening, uh, additional cell service seems to be totally stalled. Do you know anything about the project in Bow where they are in, uh, researching dead areas? And they've gotten one cell tower installed, but they're trying to find enough place to run them?
I know that the one cell tower was quite an ordeal.
Really about that?
We should put one in if they don't.
You're talking about one at the police station?
That's a big potential.
Where they're, they're not really realized that then, once you have something available to one carrier, you have to provide it to all carriers.
Even just the, the, the butters.
And pipes in the fall zone.
The one we have is up at the Witchanki Land, up on the top of the hill, right? Is that the only one? No, there's another one, and actually it's addressed in, I think, the, uh, what chapter says that, uh, one of the towers in town is dedicated almost exclusively for, uh, emergency service communication?
And, and that's very common.
Oh, don't they like then just stick their equipment on the one existing, isn't that what normally happens?
They're built for a certain amount of additional antennas on the towers.
Well, we say we want it and everybody wants it, so do we try to make it a stronger statement?
After broadband internet and panelized cellular, what more would we say?
It sucks.
As of the date of publication.
We have a cell repeater in our house, so I guess on the, on the roof every, every year, so I'm aiming the, uh, the, the, the antenna a little bit, trying to make it better, and I think it's getting worse, I don't know, like.
It's definitely getting worse.
The towers are overloaded.
Oh, is that?
No, that's not it either, um, it's a transition to five G. It's not, the five G isn't as, as, it's not as deep. So it's, it's, it's stronger, closer to the tower, it's not as good farther away from the tower.
Okay, I think we've exhausted this subject.
You brought it up.
I did bring it up.
I think it's a huge win that Comcast, for you guys, that's allowed to fill some of the gaps.
Don't count your broadband and both installed.
Yeah, exactly. I believe it then.
Yeah, you don't count your megabytes, because you will never get as many as they say.
No, you do not.
Uh, do you know when the town's cable television franchise is up?
I don't know.
People still have cable television.
So, it's the excuse that allows them access to cell internet at this point, but they need an agreement in every town for the television service. It's a franchise, once you grant it, it's basically impossible to get rid of it, but every town granted one in the first instance.
And they, and they have an expiration?
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of just a holdover status, but they have an expiration, it's used for ten years.
This is an interesting subject, because I've heard from Ken Folsom, I believe, that the town has refused for the last, uh, several years to re-up the task.
So, I want, the big sticking point in what the towns fight over to try to get more broadband is there's typically a density requirement, and the franchise says that you have to provide cable television to any town that's like this many homes per mile, and if it's past that, you don't have to. And so the towns fight over what that density requirement is, and there's usually also, like, if you're off of a red by a certain amount, they provide it, beyond that, they don't, so you fight over those. So, it sounds like that's probably what they're fighting, where it's, they've got coverage in the town, they want more coverage, and Comcast is unwilling to.
But that's what this land agreement to, to extend into areas because of that same exact reason why, you know, the.
Yeah, they theoretically agreed to put it in everywhere, which is, don't count your broadband.
Because they got the federal money.
Oh, no, fully agree.
Yeah.
So what about, but this is something that I've thought about a lot, is it, it's a monopoly, we have, we don't have a choice of providing broadband providers. Can we put, yeah, work towards a choice of broadband service rather than.
All the regulation of broadband was premised on it not being a monopoly, and they just chose to not compete with each other. So as a result, the regulation is entirely irregular, the towns have no authority to force competition.
It probably should be a public utility at this point, because this is way beyond the scope.
But, when it, when they first went in on like the A D C, it was a bunch of modern pop shops, and they were all bought up, and that's why you have a bunch of shitty, like, one of the Saki service that Atlantic broadband, that they're currently doing by bought up. It was Verizon and et cetera. So you value different quality systems all over the state, but you can't force them to do anything, they have to choose to. They pick a couple of companies that's a good luck.
So, so you have, you have Comcast, you're not going to get consolidated to come here, because they won't come here because you've got too much coverage from Comcast. But they use some of the federal money to cover the, uh, the more rural areas that were underserved, and they had to meet those requirements, that's why you're getting some money. I know it's not done yet, but that's why they're building out to, in theory, cover all of Canterbury now, and some stretches in Loudon at the same time. And, and not all towns got that deal, they had to choose to apply some money.
We're gonna have broadband all, everywhere in town?
That makes sense.
In theory, the argument is that last mine.
Well, yeah.
The trouble is also it's old technology. The DOCSIS technology, I know we're in the weeds here, is, can it be improved, depending upon the switching stations you have, but it's no fire.
But Comcast can take and run what they call safety line right up Baptist Hill Road. And I said, oh, what's this? And he said, oh, it's, it's a backup business line. So the, their line goes up Shaker Road, and in case that one ever goes down, they have a backup line going right up, and no house connections, no house connections.
Mike, are you saying that we, so I have fiber?
You have fiber?
Yes. Paid for, definitely, but we can get fiber, the town can get fiber, right?
So, so you're not, so, so Comcast, so Comcast, do you get it through Comcast? Uh, Comcast's basic technology is, is key, it's not fiber. So maybe you've got a trunk line that, and this is what I hear from them, but they aren't providing, you know, you talk to a Comcast guy, that townwide basis, they are not providing fiber, they're, they're sticking with, with cable.
But, but if I have, that means that if they have the capacity, they're just choosing.
Well, you can get onto the fiber lines if you're close enough for them to run a line, and if you pay for it in the same way that I could get onto a cable connection several years ago, because I was close enough and willing to pay for them to run the lines, close server, and now everyone on my throat has cable, pretty much because I've made for the line.
That just near you.
There's more reasons that's probably.
The town can't, the town can't just pay to extend their system because it's effectively getting stuff to a private party, and Comcast won't allow their stuff to just, all of them won't allow their stuff to connect to, hey, this part's ours and this part's yours. And so it creates this hole where the municipalities can't just use money to build the gap without violating our constitution. So why do you try all the public-private partnership stuff that's super pan and complicated, but?
It, it, this is hard stuff, and, but you guys have come a long way with these fill the gaps from Comcast. And it's, it's just, it was, you weren't going to get two companies to come in at the same time, because that return on investment, that's just not there.
But would it not be a good goal for us sitting on master plan to have a choice of internet providers?
It's not realistic.
It's not realistic.
And tell you, there's Breeze Line in Concord, why can't we have Breeze Line here?
Craig, it's more realistic that we would get, be able to promote a public utility.
Breeze Line chose to start competing in a couple very high density communities in New Hampshire, and Comcast did the same, but with our, like Durham, Concord, not, not.
I have Breeze Line and video on my Comcast on my street in Concord.
About the fifty bucks for a gig on indeed.
When I was talking about the system being intended to not be a monopoly, if any other provider came to us and said, we want a cable television franchise, the town would have to grant one on the same terms as the existing one, because we can't, you know, let them not, the problem is no one came. So if anyone ever came, we, we have to let them have at least the same terms, we're not discriminating against them, but until it's profitable, they're never going to do it. And Canterbury is an area really spread out, really low density.
I mean Comcast wouldn't be here if there wasn't federal money in it.
So, uh.
It's a lovely idea, but it's not realistic.
I mean, I think the, the state is fine, just add a good broadband internet and townwide cell network.
Battery storage for the entire town, so. All right, anything else we need to get on to in this?
I mean, that's honestly more feasible, because you can do it with private money.
I, when I first got my gig, I think it was twenty-nine, I was on, pretty paid that.
Well, on our road Comcast has gotten faster and faster over the years.
I just get Breeze on my Concord for twenty-nine dollars.
Oh, not that soon. Uh, are we moving on?
One last chapter. So the implementation chapter, we wanted to emphasize, kind of highlight the priorities. The scoring that we have is basically averaging out the scores that you as a group worked on. We have still not, we have not scored community facilities, I was hoping we could do tonight as a group.
But also.
Comma problem in line three.
Problem, all right. There was another Oxford comma problem in the presentation.
Follow along.
So, uh, did you get line sixty-two and other Oxford comma?
Okay. Yep.
Um, uh, line six, it says, existing and future land use chapter, I'm not sure that accurately reflects the statutory landing. The words existing and future.
I think we have, I, I feel like we're addressing that chapter, and, and you can call it whatever you want. You can certainly take a more.
I take that back.
And, and I will say that I've just been doing it that way for fifteen years, so maybe if we've been doing it wrong.
No, no, I look at, I look at just a few more terms.
So, so like the vision chapter, we're, we're, but more so, we're getting a little more detail here. We went through and just highlighted the scoring that got an average of a high priority or had a lot of folks identifying as an ongoing priority. So we wanted to kind of emphasize that, but also say, hey, there's a lot of other recommendations within all the tables. The addition our staff went through is to identify, um, whose responsibility for that. And I felt bad about, you know, the, I, we actually included a couple of different committees that aren't in existence yet. Trail Subcommittee and Economic Development Committee, but we talked about that through the, the plan. And we're given a lot of responsibilities here, but I think it also emphasizes there's opportunity to work, Conservation Commission, the Act Commission, the Select Board on some of these. The statute does ask you to, for the implementation chapter, to talk about who's going to do it. And I think that's always been, uh, you know, it's just a, it's a part of this chapter. At, you know, hey, this is, it's been a lot of fun, flew into this plan, how do we nudge some of these things forward? And also talks about revisiting it every year. So basically, once we get it into InDesign, this table would be just following up the first two pages of the text, so that.
So this is three point three, when you referred to.
I also wanted to get big enough, the first thing that Ken Stern said when I sent it over to him is, this has got to be eleven plus seventeen.
Bigger print. On line thirty-five through forty-five, there's one long one-on-sentence that either needs to be divided up or maybe some semicolons. It's just hard to all to digest.
I think we could probably break that into two or three. Yeah, we actually took some things out of that, so we threw the longer line, longer sentence. So as you can see, you know, you, you, we actually didn't have that many land use high priorities. But everything in the natural features chapter you guys thought was a high priority, so I think the Conservation Commission would be happy to see that.
You, you're line twenty-nine and you're line fifty-seven, fifty-eight sort of duplicate each, but.
Yeah. Just because it was in the two different chapters, and I did, I did make some reference to cluster being a multiple chapter, so I can make some reference there. Line sixty-two, there's a word missing, I think you need a H before the Z. A lot of the language was, you know, we, we modified it so readability came out of. A lot of the language was, you know, we, we, we modified it so readability came out of if you, you know, came out of the table, the language in the table.
Fifty-nine, we're talking about the building cap, but I don't see records to CIP, you haven't got to it?
We, um. I wanted to go through the process, because the CIP is in the Community Facilities chapter. So I wanted to go through our process before I presuppose what your priorities were. So that will be added after tonight, not just some more isolated posts that have a high priority.
I think your seventy-four through eighty-six is again one enormously long one.
I think a lot of those that you're pointing out, you just put a colon in.
Yeah.
Make a list.
They're just hard to.
Right, or a, or a heading and three bullet points or something. The, the bullet point, uh, the way you've done this in the, in the other chapters, it worked very nicely.
Okay.
I would say this name for sixty-seven through seventy-three.
We did have a little bit of a conversation about bullet points versus narrative, but I was trying to switch it up a little bit.
I like narrative, I prefer the column option, but I prefer bullets as well.
My, I, I, um. Um, my sort of impressionistic reading through this is that it says everything and, 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 um, and therefore doesn't prioritize anything. I don't know whether that's its intent.
So, these were those, we did carve out a lot that didn't, so there's a lot of recommendations. And that, you know, out of all five tables.
Oh, I see.
So this is maybe forty percent. It's, it's actually most of the natural features because you, you, you all like the natural features recommendations and those, those is high priority, but some of the other ones didn't come out, so we didn't have that in place. So I think a combination of some semicolons, some bullet points, emphasizing that this is a subset, these are the high priorities. These are all the priorities, and this is how you rank them, and this is who, who would have the responsibility for that.
Yeah. So, uh, the table is just the ranking, the compilation of the rankings we did.
Correct. So instead of having, you know, five bullets, we kind of looked at it as an average. And if it wasn't, if you didn't have enough to make a high, you generally went down to medium. If you didn't have a lot, I think you only had a couple that were low, maybe one. You know, it's gonna be ranked, it's gonna make it here. Um, you wouldn't expect it to be a low priority.
Sure. Therefore, everything can't be a high.
Right. Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah, okay. It's a whole, whole household budget problem.
So, we don't have to go through all of the responsibility of actions, but if you saw something there, I think as a staff, we kind of understand who would take the lead, but, you know, it's, it's emphasizing that there's some shared action here. But I was hoping to go through, and we had sent out the Community Facilities chapter, and there aren't as many. But if there was a way that we could score that tonight, so I could add the narrative and be able to emphasize those things that you as a group feel ours importance. Almost like number one, the first one should be two separate ones. The broadband and cellular service. Because I think Canterbury's being close to broadband.
Yeah, broadband is ongoing.
You know, that's ongoing, and I think cellular service is a huge.
Yeah, priority is not ongoing.
Okay. So broadband's a medium because it's happening.
Right.
Cell is high and ongoing.
Well, it's not ongoing, it's a problem.
Well, it's, it's, it's high.
It's an ongoing problem, yeah.
You can only be on it.
Right.
An ongoing priority problem.
Look at it, ongoing is being worked on, it's not being worked on.
Or immediate.
Anything else?
Yeah, I thought ongoing was that you are.
I think it's just.
A missing chapter that happened, filled it out.
I would say it's, it's, I saw it as, you know, you're, you're on this and you've been on it and you want to continue to be on it.
Right, well, I would say that for cells, for internet access, it would, I would say medium, but ongoing.
Yeah, correct.
And I see it's, it's the, my cell service, it's the third one down, objective one, the third.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And that's a high.
Yeah.
And ongoing.
Well, it's not ongoing, that's the problem.
Yeah.
High needs attention.
Well, the question is, is it the problem or the solution that we're discussing? Because the problem, it's an ongoing problem. If it's the solution, it's a high priority, it's not currently happening, and if we're not.
When I filled it out, I thought ongoing, that we were working on it.
Correct. Yeah.
Anytime I saw the word continuing in the sentence, I figured, oh, that's a clue that it's ongoing.
So that's a high priority, I would say capital improvement program is a high priority.
Uh-huh, okay, yeah.
Just, here, like, we, we could look at the telecommunications ordinance and see if you can make it more lenient in some areas, encourage cell towers, if you still can't control what people are doing in private property, but it is, there is some amount of that in the planning board's control in terms of suggesting sort of changes.
So add planning boards a responsibility for action.
Very least looking at it.
I think we skipped explore community power options.
I'll say that's a high from our.
High and ongoing.
Yeah.
Uh. We talked about capital improvement, um, conduct a community survey of solid waste recycling and pickup.
Where's the pickup?
Right after recycling and. Yeah, but nobody comes to kids by dawn.
That.
I'll leave this one for Rich.
This was kicked around by the Solid Waste Committee a couple of years ago. It was when Kim was still on at Lois. Has it been that long since everything else? And yes, we looked at, it was, we looked at the pledge of appearance for shaving. And we looked at what it would cost for, um, because that waste man, management, Casella, Pennard, Shaver. And in just about every single case, it was cheaper contract to these people.
Than to run our own.
Than to run our own.
Oh, is that right? That's interesting.
That's not surprising.
Yeah, well, Greg and I went to the Casella dump site in Vermont.
Way to fill.
In Manville, we went through top of it. And I, I think it, it hurts the conscious, the conscience of the community to consider having to that.
I mentioned everywhere, it doesn't matter whether.
It was in, it was in.
They're trying to put a level on it in, at Forest Lake in Dalton. Um, I know, you, you go down in New York City, they're pushing the stuff off libraries out in the ocean. Still, I thought they weren't there either.
No.
Just to play, uh, I don't know who's looking at those contracts, but the one thing to be careful about is I think there's a, those copies of history of low beginning price, town sells all their equipment and then raise the price, and it's much more expensive for the town to go back to doing their own stuff because they've sold everything, so maybe we're checking in on other similar sized towns who haven't done that and how long, go and see where they're at.
Northfield has pickup. I, you know, I see it, I see it on the ticker row.
They wouldn't use any of our facility, this is just strictly them picking it up and.
Well, I get it, but I'm saying they, they quote your price, the town realizes they're going through you, right? So we sell all of the equipment that we have in town.
We don't buy.
They raise the price, and then the town's option is, oh, we need to rebuy everything to, to start over and it's too expensive.
So do a lot of people in town really have a hard time going to the dump on Saturday? Or Tuesday or Wednesday?
No, no, that's not the point. The point is.
What a problem, it's hard to solve.
Yeah.
It's a cost, right, that's the point.
The cost. For whom?
For whom?
You want your tactics to keep going up? We're just trying to.
I just encourage recycling.
And I agree with Hillary's statement about conscience. Well, also, Rich, last time you talked to us about this, you said that one thing was clear in your survey of people is that people wanted to recycle even though.
That came in, in town meeting, that there was a, oh, it was just before we put the, the Baylor in, and there was a strong support by the, by the limited people at town meeting. So that's not a lot sometimes.
It's a significant fraction of the voting population.
That they were, they wanted to promote recycling and even if it costs more to get rid of the item being recycled, they wanted to recycle. So in a way, it's a contrasign, you know, and they wanted to promote that.
It's a great thing to do, correct, yeah.
It's one of the things I like about Canterbury, that we care about stuff like that.
So, uh. So this is, I asked Mike at the beginning of this meeting. And I saw it mentioned in the Community Facilities chapter, and I saw it there, and this isn't a topic that is currently on our agenda with solid waste. It, it's not anything that we're.
Pickup, you mean pickup.
The pickup, it's, it's an old, it's an old topic. And I saw it in the Community Facilities, and I asked Mike, where did this come from?
Two years ago.
I kind of feel blindsided.
Yeah, I know.
Because I'm on, I'm the chair of the committee, and I'm going, so Mike, where did this come from?
So, you know, it wasn't in our surveys, there was nothing in our, in the surveys, so that means. Can you just suggest I'm eliminating this line from everything?
It could be, um, but I didn't know if there was, so, so administrator that wanted this put in undenounced to me?
Not recently, no.
Okay.
Now, I have heard.
Occasional gripes from people about not getting pickup there, and some people just contract for private pickup because they don't, don't work can, they don't want to work can, get to the dump.
There's a lot of gripes. Yeah, Logan, there's a lot of gripes about the transfer station, about the green bags, about the sturdiness of them, about having to buy them.
The color.
The color is something.
Not the color drawn, well, the quality.
I kind of feel one's a compliment.
Um, the quality of the green bag.
I've never been on a bad trip.
Um, and my neighbor, he takes and he has these contractor bags, and he stuffs all his stuff into a contractor, contractor bag, they're black in color. And he brings three of them down at the end of his driveway every week, the Shaver picks them up.
Who picks them up?
Shaver.
Is that one of the companies? You can tell who, it's, it feels to me like, I don't know, twenty-five percent of the town, and you, you can.
It's a, it's a very small percentage that uses the transfer station.
I don't know exactly what it is.
That uses the transfer station is really a small percentage.
Oh, I felt like it was a major, way over the majority, huh?
No, they're the ones that go to town meeting every year.
That's interesting, I didn't know that.
There's two thousand people in Canterbury, do we have two thousand people that show up at town meeting?
No, we have about eight hundred, but there's actually about three thousand people in Canterbury and, um, a large fraction, those are small number.
In the next two days, before I post this, and I checked in with you about some language that would replace a little bit on page seven ten, but I'm wondering if you want to have something for a placeholder for household hazardous waste here as well? Because I know that that has kind of parcolated out within.
That keeps coming up, yeah.
That is a very expensive endeavor. Um, last time Canterbury did it, they combined with another town, um. They, you contract with these people for a certain amount of volume of stuff. And last time Canterbury did it, and I think Kent said it was with Northfield, it could have been a different town. They hit their limit, so it started at nine, they hit their limit at eleven AM, done.
And they won't take a reseller after that?
So, 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 so that's, that's the trouble. But if you have more towns to absorb that, but the first couple of years are scary.
Oh, yeah.
Or what's scarier, having it dumped wherever.
And the scarier is, the longer you go, the more stuff people are collapsing.
Maybe that's why they ran out, because it was a.
No, that's, that's definitely what it is, so you want to have like a group of five towns.
Every constant.
And if anything, those are, those are all issues about household hazardous waste, but to have a placeholder to at least have.
No, even the southwest corner of the state, they have, Keane does it, and they have all the outlying towns, and they all.
Yeah. You can, you can actually go pay the third Saturday of the month in the summertime in Wolf Run. So, but, you know, five gallons of gas is fifty bucks. But, but they have their permanent household hazardous waste.
A long way to go.
In the interest of moving forward, something like continue to assess the town's waste management and recycling needs, just be a placeholder, or it's not specifically letting you do anything, but it keeps in place.
Well, it's not the long time, but broadband.
And I let you guys talk a long time about trash, yeah.
And now it's ended.
And now, okay, so let's, we're trying to wrap up this implementation.
Let's start talking about flags.
Objective.
Can I add household hazardous waste to that?
Oh, yeah, just, and you just have, I, I just figured, continue to assess, leaves it in place without having a more specific action.
Can we, can we say that that's a medium priority for this group?
I would, I would say, uh, I think.
I would say high.
Hazardous part is that I'm even saying like a high.
Okay. I would lean towards high, only because it's been a long time and there's a lot of it sitting there.
So I'll circle back and add a little bit of text about household hazardous waste. But I'll talk to you about what's realistic about the work of the Solid Waste Committee.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, did you get what you need, Mike, on this, about who is responsible?
I could, I could do that.
You want your home.
That, that call was my dad, it's his birthday.
Oh, my God.
I don't think that.
Play a candle. Alright, so, uh, let's talk about next meeting is, what are we doing with you, Mike?
We're gonna post this by Friday. Three chapters.
This Friday.
This Friday, for the, uh, the hearing that you have in two weeks, release three chapters.
And so that's our next meeting. And it's just before, uh, the town fair, so there's gonna be a lot going on here in the center.
We need to be in here, we can't have the town hall.
I think we're fine with it.
Weekend is the fair, the twenty-sixth?
Always the last.
Twenty-seventh July. Do the road race as well?
I think it's the final.
Yeah, I think it's the morning there, yeah.
So Mike, you'll get the PDFs of the final things to me, so I can put them on the website.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
And then there's a notice, a notice posted also, I want to find it, right?
You noticed it earlier, right?
I, um.
Well, it was on Facebook.
On last night.
I would do it on Thursday because there's nothing open on Friday.
So there are two things, we gotta get the stuff on the website and we have to post the note.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't put the notice up on Facebook yet, I just didn't have a chance to do it, but I will be.
You'll be able to do that there tonight, seeing as you don't have to go to Conservation Commission.
I'll do.
You could, you were gonna talk about the power.
Yeah, I'm really overloaded this week, so I'm just as happy to not have to get to that.
I, I offered to talk to them about it before, and we've had an email stream going back and forth between Ken and Kelly, so. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike, good job.
Thank you, thanks for that.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Yeah. Good work, Mike.
Thanks.
We'll send you PDFs of those from now.
Alright, folks, uh. We are going back to item number two. For minutes of June twenty-fifth. Uh, the motion on the minutes, please.
Remove the minutes.
One second. And discussion?
I didn't get any.
You didn't get any comments? Anything? That doesn't mean people can't have comments now.
No comments.
All right, let's look for a vote on the minutes.
Outstanding. You weren't here.
Vote for two minutes, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions from those who were absent? Thank you. And we are back to rules of procedures, this has been an ongoing project for a number of weeks or months. I tried to condense this into something, I think it is getting late, so we will deal with the items on the first page and the top of the second page and the items for further discussion and research, we will leave for another meeting. Item one, entering meeting materials in the record. This would be an add to Article 32H. The order of the secretary shall prepare a list of all documents submitted regarding an application that are circulated, distributed to members to then circulated or distributed and/or distributed.
Uh, we can share. This is my, uh. Because if you look at the procedures and you go Article 3.
Yeah.
And then you go number two. It stops it out.
So that rips the next one down to G, we're just picking it up in the row.
Yes, we're taking them in the, G is our next one.
You can look at it.
I had the same thing, just kept.
Wait, can you imagine to look through?
Well, I'm looking for the word, I have circulated slash distributed, should that be let, the Joshua, do you have an opinion, should that say circulated or or circulate and or?
Well, and or is always a problem.
Are circulated or distributed, so that is the language. So we're looking for a motion to adopt this as Article 32H. And a second?
Seconded.
Yep.
Discussion? Let's take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any extensions or nays? No. Okay, so now we're talking about our add as Article 32G. The secretary shall email all available application documents to all board members at least 10 days prior to the meeting at which the application will be considered. We're looking for a motion to adopt this.
So.
A second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Rich. Discussion?
So if you don't have an email account, is that, you can't be on the planning board?
You're issued a time limit, so.
This is true.
You can go to the library and use it.
But if you don't have broadband.
What if you don't want?
Suffer.
Then you don't get it, I guess. You get it when you come to the meeting.
If you choose not to access your email account, that's your problem.
All right, so I guess we're looking for a vote. All those in favor?
32G is the one?
Yeah.
G is in the next.
Circulation of meeting preparation material, this is already in the new draft, is Article 32F. Meeting preparation materials shall be assembled by the secretary and electronically distributed in packets to all board members, not individually. What's not individually mean? I don't understand what that applies to. That means Lois doesn't send it to you two days before.
She's sending a single email at the.
Should I just say at the same time? Oh, I thought it meant that the packets, the documents should be in packets and not individual documents drilled out, and so I think there's an ambiguity. There is an ambiguity there.
I believe what this was addressing was that some people were seeing meeting materials beforehand and other members weren't getting meeting materials at the same time, so not that everybody gets the same information at the same time, I think is what this was trying to address.
So perhaps it's just.
Just all board members, period, and get out, not individually, because all board members is all.
All the board members at the same time.
At the same, yeah. Well. Roughly the same time, if you've done it, well. Well, it's a group email, so it should be.
Yeah, there's no reason not to send a single email or if you miss someone to immediately follow up. Again, if you don't check your email, that's your problem, no, Lois' problem.
When practical, the secretary will distribute packets at least 24 hours before meetings.
After you, problem.
So we're looking for a motion to adopt this?
As amended?
As amended, yes. So move. Thank you, John, for second.
Seconded.
Thank you, Megan. Discussion? We had some already, further discussion?
I just have a quick question. What is in, what's a meeting preparation material that's not going to be application documents?
Like the agenda.
All this stuff we got from Mike?
Any, any, yeah, any supporting documents?
Do you read the email, Brandon?
The amended rules.
No, 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 I just mean the distinction between these two. And so I guess it's saying G is if there's a hearing, you're getting stuff further in advance and correct, but if it's not a hearing, 24 hours.
All right, uh, we ready for a vote on which one? 48A?
No, two.
32F.
Yes.
So we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. No extension, no objection. Next item, time limitations, this is in the new draft already, ready? Article 49F. I think it would be better placed that it's Article 48A. The wording is the board may adopt time limits for testimony, questions, comments, and discussion of all, and sorry, I forgot, may adopt reasonable that was requested by council. So reasonable time limits.
As a counter.
Yeah.
Council suggestion.
I think he, he said if you were to set it, say at two minutes, that might be considered too short and trying to curtail the discussion.
The, 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 New Hampshire Legislature often does three minutes. Which is true.
They do do that, yeah.
Two minutes is a surprisingly long amount of time.
The word may, I have a problem with that, I mean, either we should do it or not. If you may, it kind of seems like you might be picking on somebody here.
No, this is deliberately.
It's a per meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's on a per meeting, not a per person basis.
Right, yes, we're making more iconic, if we have 30 people here in the left of the seat.
You'll, you'll know when you get an application where you need a minute.
And you come in and you go, oh crap, there's a lot of people here, maybe it's time for us to time.
Yeah, generally, you kind of want to avoid it. Yes.
Yeah.
Pause. So we have a motion to adopt this and to adopt it as 48A. So move. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Joshua.
And what's the question mark at the end of the A?
If it should be moved from 49F to 48A. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No objections, no extensions? Minutes procedure, this is also in the new draft. It's missing a quotation at the second to the last line. Close quote. After the word changes.
You mentioned that last time.
The board secretary shall draft meeting minutes and make available to the public within five business days of the meeting. These draft minutes will be, will be sent via email to all board members for board members to review.
Shouldn't there say make them available to people?
Can you read it through once before we?
Please. The board secretary shall draft meeting minutes and make available to the public within five business days of the meeting. These draft minutes will be sent via email to all board members for board members to review. Board members may reply to the secretary only with suggested minutes changes. The secretary is not to circulate these suggested changes prior to the meeting. In order to efficiently compile draft minutes, the board chair and the secretary may communicate regarding draft minutes. The secretary shall include a disclaimer when sending out draft minutes. Quotes, please see attached meeting minutes, please do not circulate or reply. You may reply to this email only with any suggested changes, close quotes. Minutes procedures and policies will be determined only by majority vote of the board. I, I think Hillary was right, there's a word missing in the first sentence, yes, and make them available, yes.
And we do need to add that close quote because it's not.
Yeah, yeah.
I should, I'm also gonna suggest we don't need the word not to be capitalized.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
In, in the second sentence, these draft minutes will be sent, I would suggest changing the word will, shall.
What was the first thing you mentioned?
Yeah, make them available.
That make them available.
It's right in the first line, yeah, the first line.
Yeah.
All right, so.
So I think I've made clear my, my issues with collaboration on draft minutes. I still maintain that we should go with the New Hampshire Municipal Association's recommendation that may be dated by one person. If we are to weave in that board chair may communicate, which is pretty ambiguous. I would like to request that communications, that they may electronically communicate so that those communications are available by written requests or by any member in the board who wants to know what those communications about draft minutes were.
Right, they are available, right, by request, right, anything is available, so.
I disagree with that. I disagree with it too, I think it just makes it cumbersome.
Then the, the issue of whether it's okay for them to communicate was, was asked of council and this, this was approved as a basis.
That is correct. So we're looking for a vote, I mean a motion on this. Motion to accept the new draft Article 32A, so move, as amended. Thank you.
John?
And we're looking for a second?
Okay.
Seconded.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, Article 45A. Alternates may serve on subcommittees and may vote on subcommittee recommendations to the board. Looking for a motion to adopt that?
Move.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you, Rich. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or objections? Next item, Article 41. Absence for meeting in, board members and alternates should advise the secretary at least 24 hours in advance if they know they will not be attending a meeting. I love the word should because sometimes you just can't, you're correct. Looking for a motion? Thank you, Joshua, net, second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or extensions? Recordings of meetings, add Article 35. The official audio/video recordings of a meeting will be those made by a town employee on town equipment or as otherwise determined by a majority of the board members in the event that an employee is not available to record.
Oh, it's just the word will in the first line, you changed to shall?
Thank you. Any other? Um, this, this, this guy whose name I've forgotten, who records a bunch of town meetings, Edgar.
Edgar.
Edgar, so this makes it those cannot be official? Because they're kind of being treated that way now. We can. That's part, so that's a part of the, yeah, council was concerned that there would be numerous recordings that are considered official. And this is to, now, if, if we decided that we want, if the board decided that, say, Cal couldn't, Cal's not, doesn't show up and Edgar's here, when Edgar's here, the board can vote, yeah, that's what it says. Otherwise determined by a majority of the board members in the event that the employee is not available.
Of course, and I think we're trying to get Edgar's recording for official.
That's very, you do that all the time.
Can, could we add or town equipment is not available?
Yeah.
If both of those are specified and if the equipment's not working, we can use single equipment.
Good catch.
I guess this would be more of a legal question, what makes it official? Like is, does that have any official standing more than any other recording in a court?
If there's any disagreement between two different recording sources, sets of information, then we have a designated official one?
So are we adding them that we are recording all meetings?
Uh, well, I can't guarantee that we are going to record all meetings, so.
Well, they have to if that's coming down from the state.
So when it comes down, we'll, I mean, we, our policy is now that we're recording is to, and I don't see any reason why we would stop doing that unless we didn't have Cal or we didn't have equipment or we didn't have Edgar.
If that's our policy, it should be reflected in our policy.
How do you mean?
Well, it could start with saying meetings will be reported, there will be an official reporting.
Okay, I'd be hesitant to add that just because I'm not sure we, we always have the infrastructure.
Unless we are.
If not, it would say possibly.
This feels like a larger candidate.
Yes, I'm gonna put it, I'm gonna add a policy to record on the, for further discussion and research. And as I said before, our access to town council is limited because of budgetary reasons and so it takes it's taking longer to process.
This is the kind of thing that made the municipal association sort of wrong.
Yes, I, I work with.
It sounds like there may be a dictate from on pod, that whole superseding.
Right, there might be a answer that says it has to say this, so. Adding unnecessary words to the K N.
Stop over from the K N, hold on.
So as I said, I'm proposing we stop there on rules and procedures.
Do we have to vote on that first?
Oh, yes, we do need to vote on that, thank you.
Can you read back the way, what it says now?
The official audio/video or audio or video recording of a meeting shall be those recordings, plural, of a meet, of meetings. I think the audio vid, video, that's an accepted term, audio AV.
You can leave that to the slash.
The slash, okay. So video recordings, plural, of meetings, plural, shall be those made by the town employee on town equipment or as otherwise determined by a majority of the board members in the event that an employee or town equipment is not available. Yeah, and I'm striking to record if this is what you see necessary. Yeah. I, I, I'll move.
Hold on, Ray, what are you supposed to? On town equipment or, wasn't, didn't we say there was gonna be or town?
No, it's on, in, in the last line, in the event an employee or town equipment is not.
Employee or town equipment is not available. Catcher, okay, I missed that.
Okay. Uh, so you moved it, Joshua, we're looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, John. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections, extensions? And removing a policy on recording to further discussion and research.
Nothing on and.
All right, that brings us to other business or adjournment? Motion to adjourn?
I have other business. I submitted a letter, I think I'll even precede it. I did request that be put on the website with the other meeting materials. Perhaps it can be this one now that I'm mentioning it in this meeting, that it be available to the public. Um, perhaps it could be this one now that I'm mentioning it in this meeting, that it be available to the public on the town website.
You go with that.
I think that's it.
All right, uh.
I think it's important that it be put there.
I would, on that, I would also like to know if the board would like to discuss it, not tonight, but in the future.
All right, well, I thank you for your letter, Megan. I believe we all share a desire to be a better board. Uh, members can assess the content of your letter and form their own opinions. I question if more discussion is necessary or productive for the board. The board's already spent a significant amount of time on this. And so it's a question for the board members, do we feel we need to talk about this anymore?
No, I'll just add one comment. It's a matter of intent versus perception. And for you to, for a second letter to generate and force my perceptions, which is purely personal, that they were mischaracterized as intent is wrong. And that's all I have to say, and I think we need to put it to bed and move on.
And I just like say I can't force anyone to have a perception.
Megan, I just made a statement, okay? You don't need to read up everything.
Okay, guys. Uh, and.
Okay, Rich.
I would like to move that we not talk about this anymore.
Yeah, seconded.
And, uh, so, all those in favor, are there more discussion? More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, so we, uh, we'll, the letter will be posted. And do we have more business or motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Joshua.
Seconded.
Thank you, John. All those in favor?
Aye.